Good to go, or do we need a minute?
Recording has begun.
Okay, wonderful. All right, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock, and I would like to officially start this November 28th meeting. I will do so with a roll call. Director Fitz?
Councilman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And if you all would stand, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the November 28th, 2023 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the approval of our minutes from the November 21st meeting. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from November 21st, 2023, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us down to the next portion of our agenda. This is an exciting time to welcome a new council member. And we were going to do the swearing of the oath. So I am going to ask David Winkler to come on up.
Repeat after me. I say your name.
I, David Winkler.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
In judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Councilman and town of Plata.
Councilman for the town of Plata.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We still have these two. I'm not so careful. Don't read anything. Just don't even worry about it. All right, would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you.
Well, there you go. Now, you are official. And you should come up to the dais and have a seat. Very much congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you stepping up and your willingness to serve our community.
Big shoes to fill.
Thank you so much. All right. Chief, I'm going to have you come on down.
It's always bad when the microphone's smarter than the chief. Good evening, council. It's my privilege tonight to introduce you to Mary Chaney and Benjamin Shaves. They, on December 13th, will complete seven months of training at the Anarondale County Police Academy. Mary, who goes by Becca, was born and raised on Maryland's eastern shore. Sees a graduate of Snow Hill High School and attended the Warwick Community College with a strong focus on criminal justice. Her stepfather is retired Baltimore city officer, and her stepbrother is currently an Anarondale County police officer. She served six years as a correctional officer at the Ocean City Police Department until she came onboard with the LaPlata Police Department. She's looking forward to getting on the road and interacting with our community. Benjamin Shaves was born in South Korea and grew up in Baltimore County. He graduated from Calvert Hall College High School and attended Guilford College in North Carolina with a strong focus on criminal justice and sociology. He worked for the Baltimore Police Department from 2014 to 2015. He left and went into the private sector, acting as a military contractor. He worked as a security officer, and he's a firearms instructor. Ben has been highly passionate about community policing and community involvement, and he looks forward with getting in and working with the LaPlata community. So we are glad to have them onboard. They've just about finished their seven months of fun. Like, you know, they always told me, you know, boot camp in the army, six, six weeks, but the police academy, seven months. So anyway, Mayor?
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States? The Constitution of the United States? And that I will be faithful? And that I will be faithful? And bear true allegiance? And bear true allegiance? To the state of Maryland? To the state of Maryland? And support the Constitution and laws thereof? And support the Constitution and laws thereof? And that I will? And that I will? To the best of my skill and judgment? To the best of my skill and judgment? Diligently and faithfully? Diligently and faithfully? Without partiality or prejudice? Without partiality and prejudice? Execute the duties of? Execute the duties of? Police officer of the town of LaPlata? Police officer of the town of LaPlata? According to the Constitution and laws of this state? The Constitution and laws of this state? And while she's signing, I need to tell this story because I went down to the police department to meet this Mary. And I'm asking the police officers, you know, is Mary here? And they're looking at me like I have three heads. And I'm like, okay, somebody is pulling a joke upon me. I said, I was told that there's like a new cadet, Mary? No, there's Becca. And I was like, okay, so Becca was ghosting me for quite some time. I would come up there, and they said, oh, she just left. And I was like, she doesn't exist. Until we came into a parade and this, this person that was directing traffic, I was in a car, and she gave me this, this look because I don't think we were doing the right thing. And I would go, that's gotta be her. Wait till she finds out. And she gave the look, the look to me. So I am so proud of you. I really did want to do the, the tree. I really did. I really did. Still not out of the, of the, but congratulations. It's been a long seven months, and we feel welcome you here. So I know you're going to do wonderful things. Yep, Ben, thank you. All right, I'm going to sign to make it official, so. And that's one. We will swear it. All right. Do you want your name? I say your name?
I, Benjamin Shaves.
Do you swear that I will support?
Do you swear that I will support?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality, partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the duties of police officer of the town of LaPlata?
Execute the duties of police officer of the town of LaPlata?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
Excellent, thank you. But you know what? You never last a hire. Strong hire, but congratulations, you are going to sign for us. And Becca, did you have anything you'd like to say to the people that are here? Becca, you will take the time.
Um, I would like to say thank you to all my friends and family and the Ocean City Police Department for getting me started and then ultimately getting me here to begin my journey as a police officer.
Excellent. Would you like to say something?
I just wanted to have to. Generally for the opportunity to go come back in the policing, of course, to see you all out, all out in the street. Have a good time.
Welcome.
With the badge. You're going to be honored. You got your name here, and you got the town's name there, so always represent. Congratulations. There's your badge.
We do have cookies and punch. You do have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want cookies and punch, so there's a go. I'm just saying, because we do have that there. It'll be quick. All right, next on our agenda is public comment. If anyone would like to speak, we ask that you come on now. Limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and whether you are in the Incorporated Town Limits.
Good evening, Sue Greer. On behalf of Stagecoach LaPlata LLC, I am an attorney in the town and a taxpayer in the town of LaPlata. I represent the developer of the Stagecoach project. I'm here tonight to request the town council approve the agreement negotiated by Stagecoach with the town submitted in December of 2022, and a final version resubmitted September 1st, 2023. On August 22nd, the town council gave consensus to directing the town manager and town attorney to continue working with Stagecoach on an infrastructure and allocation agreement. The town manager's words. Councilman Jenkins, you noted that there had been discussions of an agreement for a number of years and questioned why consensus was needed. Your observation was correct. With respect to the current town council, two years ago in August, Stagecoach in good faith began working toward an agreement that would satisfy the town's needs as well as the entitlements needed to move the Stagecoach project forward. Using the Heritage Green Agreement as a model, in December of 2022, Stagecoach presented a fair and balanced agreement. In April, staff provided verbal feedback that the agreement was conceptually acceptable, but requested prudently refined language that ensured the town would not grant capacity if capacity did not exist. In early June of 2023, Stagecoach submitted a revised agreement addressing these concerns. In September of 2023, Stagecoach submitted a final revised agreement addressing concerns from the town attorney, who I may note was nothing but fair and professional throughout these proceedings. In October of 2023, Stagecoach made a presentation directly to the town council. At that meeting, the town attorney spoke positively of the proposed agreement as both fair to the town and fair to the project. And I believe the town attorney further observed that the agreement reflected what would ultimately be in the town's adequate public facilities ordinance. Over 30 days later, Stagecoach still has no agreement and has no written comments from the town. This issue, though, dates back to 2015, when the town approached Stagecoach about working together to apply for a USDA loan for water and sewer infrastructure for the southwest quadrant. At the request of the town, Stagecoach paid for all of the engineering and market analysis and independent fiscal analysis and all of the town's legal fees. In January of 2020, Stagecoach appeared before a prior town council, who directed staff to return within 30 days with necessary agreements. A week later, Stagecoach was advised by staff that the alignment for the pump station had been moved to the adjacent property. Brett Sussman, the prior town attorney, confirmed in writing that the adjacent property owner had previously refused to cooperate with the town but was now cooperating, and that led to the realignment. This relocation hurt Stagecoach and benefited the adjacent property by replacing an existing pump station that was nearing capacity and providing additional capacity for 200 additional homes recently approved by the town. So I was surprised at the October meeting before you to hear a staff member ask, how is this agreement fair to the adjacent property? The real question, council, is whether this agreement is fair to the town and fair to Stagecoach. The agreement provides this town with community infrastructure requested, but also provides Stagecoach with the entitlements it has to have to move forward. Stagecoach has been nothing but open and transparent with this council and with the public, and has done everything to cooperate with the town. So I'm asking you, as the town council, as an act of good governance and fundamental fairness, to approve the agreement submitted by Stagecoach in September of this year. I did it in three minutes, and I thank you all for your time and consideration of our request. And I do have a copy of the written comments for each of you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Greer. Appreciate that.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, thank you very much. Chief, your monthly report, please.
Are there any questions for the report that went out?
Madam Mayor, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just have a couple of questions. When I'm looking at your report, looking at the number of warnings that we issued, car stops, reportable collisions, what constitutes a warning? How, how, why are we giving so many warnings that we would be able to track them like that? And they're consistent across the years and months?
Well, that's a good question. So we use the e-ticket systems that the Maryland State Police issues out. So on one sheet of paper that we give to a motorist, so if you stop somebody for having a taillight out and you find out that they're suspended, you know, the officer normally writes a warning for the taillight being out or an equipment repair order, and then the citation for being suspended. So we really ask our officers not to add on, especially if somebody has multiple violations. Write the one that's probably the most serious. So that's why, you know, we're pretty consistent at looking at our warnings and equipment repair orders. That usually represents 75% of the traffic paper that our officers give out, and citations are about 25%. So, and we really ask them, you know, if somebody runs bus lights, they run a red light, all those things that could be causative of a very serious crash, speeding over 15 miles an hour, that they really consider writing citations. But it really boils down to the officer's discretion.
Okay. And then the car stops. I see a lot of Virginia traffic coming through in really dangerous speeds and weird behavior. The car stops, are they residents of Charles County or even just the state of Maryland? Are they coming from Virginia?
With 301, we, we get folks from all up and down the eastern seaboard. The majority of the folks are probably Charles County residents, but we do have quite a bit of folks from especially the King George area of Virginia. So, and one of the issues that we know in Maryland is that it's very easy to get tags in Virginia, even if you live in a different state. And what that creates for us here in Maryland is some of those folks don't put insurance on their cars. So it, it creates even more issues when we go to investigate car collisions. But your observations are keen. We see a lot of Virginia traffic, not, not only on 301, but in the neighborhoods.
In the neighborhoods.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And my last question is reportable collisions. You know, there are lots of reportable collisions. What constitutes a reportable collision?
So if the car needs to be towed?
Okay.
If there's an arrest made, a DUI, or there's some other outstanding thing. But we, if we did every parking lot accident, we wrote a collision report. That's all our folks would do all day long. So what we do is we go there, we supervise the exchange of information, make sure every, you know, there's no issues going on. People say, I'm not giving you my, my information. We supervise those, so really civil, really not criminal. But if it's something where a car needs to be towed, somebody's injured or somebody's arrested because they're DUI or driving while suspended, that's usually when we have a reportable collision.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, thanks again for the report. I have a question and then a comment. The question is following up Councilwoman Bryant Ward's question. Do you, in your opinion, do you think traffic stops, particularly for speeding, are a deterrent to somehow control speeding to a degree?
I, I do. And you know, you go into communities that, when you go over the bridge and you go through, I want to say it's Port Royal, Virginia. Everybody does 25 miles an hour, and there's a reason for that, because they do active enforcement. So we, we ask our officers to do active enforcement. One of the challenges we have is each year our, our call volume seems to be increasing, so there's less time for them to get out and do things. But we really like them to get in the neighborhoods at least 30 minutes a day. Like I, Mayor and I, I don't know how many times we've been together at HOA meetings, and I always say the biggest complaint I get is somebody's speeding in my neighborhood. And the second one is I got a ticket for speeding in my neighborhood from one of your officers. So, yeah, that enforcement is really a way to change behavior. That, that's why we do what we do.
Thank you. And then the, just a comment. Thank you again for, for you and your safety and protection during the Veterans Day parade and other events. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chief, a quick question. How is Ryan doing in his new role? Has he been able to do, and I'm not sure the exact title of it?
Well, he's still a cadet. We just added some parking enforcement duties to it. We're getting, we're getting some really positive feedback from the merchants. Because one of the things we know, people who tend to shoplift tend to leave their cars parked in the fire lanes. So if you have somebody actively moving the cars out of the fire lanes, then they're much happier because there's less opportunity for crime. But he's young, he's, he's learning like anybody else, so he's doing the best that he can.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
All right. And we did, if you, if you have a neighbor who is, has Alzheimer's, dementia, autism, or other intellectual developmental disability, we do have Project Lifesaver now. We got on a grant for, from the Justice Department. So we'd really like to get people to where they have that technology, and if they should wander, we would be able to hopefully locate them very quickly.
And thank you for, for pursuing that. That is such an important addition to our community. All right, Director Harrington? All right, any questions for Director Harrington? All right, woo! Good job! All right, Director Stahl? Mark that day. All right.
How can I get so lucky?
Any questions for Director Stahl? All right, we've got one right here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl, just three questions for you. Well, one is a comment. Thank you for finally getting to 99% on the meter updates. That was, I was like, they, I think they promised that in like December of 2020, you know, one?
It's, it's a constant problem, and it will fluctuate up and down. But the numbers are up, and it's, so far, it's working well.
99%, that's good. When Bruce left, the IT person, there was a concern about how you would monitor, maintain our IT over in the Public Works Department. How are you doing with that? Because I haven't heard anything about, you know, the maintenance and the upkeep of that.
We've always worked very closely. We, we use all Schneider products over there. And so the Cytech system that we use and all of the PLCs and everything use a similar software that's all part of a Schneider product. Even when Bruce was here, we did purchase a maintenance agreement with Schneider for all of those softwares. There've been some hiccups. We actually have been working with Walter, is it Michelle Walter? To try and, for some reason, Justin Roberts, one of our actual licensed operators, has been locked out of certain things, and we've been trying to increase his permissions. And so it's been, it's been a little bit of a challenge and a hiccup there. But I will say Kirk is actually very IT oriented, so he's very, very helpful in that regard. So it has worked out well, and I think he's been, between he and Walter, have not had any issues with that. We're still going to have different software upgrades where things will be challenging, but for us, it really hasn't been a tremendous challenge.
Okay. And then my last question, and this is my ignorance. What does it mean to run a well to collect yearly samples?
Well, if, what happens is in all of these, if, when, currently, we only run two wells.
Okay.
At any given time. Most of the time, we run well eight, which is out at Tillman Lake, and we run well 11, which is up on Rosewick. The other wells, sometimes we only run sporadically just to keep them active. But because we don't have enough demand for, to run five wells all at the same time, we just generally only run two. If we have some where by, from sampling challenges, where you, you may have the additional need to, to collect more samples to, to get the, the water sampling correct. You may have had one that came up with one bad sample. You would then run that well and make sure that it's flushed more often and things like that, and then retest it, and it will test out fine. A lot of challenges, too, when we're doing water sampling today is so, the protocols for, you know, the parts per million on certain test samples are so low that even somebody who has a contaminated finger, they happen to touch the vial, you can get a positive coliform sample, for instance. And so we just go back and re-sample. So we'll have to go back and run that well some more. Not a, not a real challenge. I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide anything. We use Maryland Environmental Service still to do all of our sampling. So it's not like, you know, to be honest, we have the fox watching the hen house in this situation. We're, we actually use the state of Maryland to do all of our sampling for us. So we're not cheating anyone, and we're not afraid of our results. So it's, it's very good.
Last question. Did we finish the work on Calmia Court?
We have not yet. The only part that's not finished is the paving, and we've been waiting for the paving contractor to get started. We're trying, we're very hopeful that next week we will get the paving contractor in here, and we'll have everything done before Christmas. I don't, I would like to think we could get all the paving done, but that's the only part that's missing. We've, we've poured all the curb and gutter. Everything's been graded out. Everything is ready. We've gone in and put all the CR6 in there for the fill and brought it up to level. We're just waiting on the asphalt right now.
I really appreciate you doing that, and I'm sure the residents are really, really thankful.
I think they're very happy. I don't think we, we certainly didn't disturb a lot over there. It, it turned out to be a fairly easy project for us. But it's still waiting on, you know, we had to wait for the concrete contractor to come in and pour all the curb and gutter and the gutter pans. And we finally got that, and now we're waiting on the asphalt contractor, and that's kind of the last piece, other than the painting of the striping. So it, once we get it paved, we'll go ahead and at least temporarily stripe. I think my intention would be to go in there and just put the tape down throughout the winter and wait for the springs to, to be able to permanently paint the stripes.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Stahl. Just, I guess, I'm sure you meant on your last slide under administration, where you talk about the hydraulic modeling proposal. I think the estimated completion is June of '24 and not '23? That's correct. Okay, I just, so that's moving ahead pretty good then, isn't it? That model?
Yes, we've already had our kickoff meeting for that. We're working on it. We're, we've got to do some more. We're, we're bringing in hydrant testing. We've got some additional hydrant testing that they're requesting us to do, which is fine. We, but I think all in all, it's just a matter of plugging the data in. We but I think all in all, it's just a matter of plugging the data into the model and running the model. And some of it is actually being given to us because we required Pine Grove to actually do a water model just for Pine Grove. And so we're going to be able to take that data and plug that into our model to see how that works for the whole town.
Will this require any additional IT support?
No, no.
Okay.
No, they actually have the software. We're using WaterCAD. So it's a it's a software that they have. The real question will be, and and because we work with Macron, we'll have full access to using that that modeling system through them. We're not actually going to buy the. But what we would do is when we bring new developments in where we it's large enough that we want to see how that interacts with the model, we will get the developer to come in, provide that information to Macron and then use Macron to verify the model and how it will affect our system.
Thank you.
Yes. Director Stahl, thank you for your report. Was curious, in the Public Works section, stated that you guys have created a list of sidewalk repairs needed throughout the town to be released for bidding. Are you able to send us what you guys came up with as the high priority sidewalk repairs throughout the town?
We can certainly do that. That's not a problem generally. And just like with streets, we give you an overall list. We try not to prioritize that too much because sometimes we have to make changes and that kind of thing. We're very busy right now with the concrete contractor. It's been very slow trying to get them. But the right now we're working down on 301. And for instance, last we worked last Monday, but then they shut us down for the Thanksgiving holiday from Tuesday all the way till this Tuesday. We couldn't do any work throughout the 301 corridor because it was a state highway. So we were shut down for a week doing concrete repairs down there as part of the Southwest Quadrant project. And that happens on holidays and that kind of thing. But it does kind of slow us up. And then the concrete contractors go other places. And then we have to wait for them to come back. And it's it's just always a challenge.
Knowing that you'll get us the list. So don't don't feel like you need to give me the location of every. But can you generally give us an idea of where the repairs are going to be taking place throughout town, aside from 301 that you just mentioned? Like, can you do that now? Like, just general idea?
Yeah.
Like streets?
Oh, yes. We can, oh, right now?
Just, yeah.
And it's I really, I honestly, to tell you the truth, I haven't looked at the list recently. So I can't regurgitate that. But I I know we're doing some, we've got a few repairs over in Steeplechase that we're working on right now. We had some over in Kings Grant that we were working on here and there, different places. To be honest, our our sidewalk budget, other than for very specific projects, is fairly low, as you know. And so when it comes to concrete repairs, you know, we we generally only budget about $10,000 for repairs and maintenance throughout. And so
It doesn't get us.
It doesn't get us very far.
Because that's one of the highest priced areas.
They are. We're currently paying curb now costs us about $25 a linear foot for curb and gutter. And we're paying. I want to say off the top of my head, it's about $10 per square foot on a sidewalk. So one five by five sidewalk panel would be 25 square feet. So you're looking at $250 per panel. So $1,000 gets you four or five foot panels.
Do any of these repairs, are any of them taking place in what we kind of know as downtown, like our walkable area?
We really haven't concentrated when you say in the downtown because of the renovations associated with the Route Six corridor. And so we we've got some repairs where we had to go up here. And we did some repairs, as you might notice, right up close to Route Six, right here at the Stephens Building. We had to dig that up and put the new water line in. And so we replaced that sidewalk. But because of the the entire Route Six changes that are going to be there, that's all going to be really done by state highway.
But the projected timeline is pretty far out.
It is.
I mean, it's at least two to three years out before they do any kind of. I mean, and that's that's our current projection. We know that could change significantly.
Certainly.
You know, as part of our, you know, our goals here as as the town and trying to make downtown more walkable, maybe there are some. Rather than replacing a whole panel, maybe there are some ways that we could identify options as to at least making it a little bit more safe. Because I mean, it's not in disrepair downtown. But even Washington coming up, there are some spots that are.
The only thing I I would say is that we we can't work on either an SHA right of way or a county right of way. And so you have to keep in mind that the county owns Washington Avenue and the and the state owns all of Charles Street. We have to concentrate on things like St. Mary's Avenue, that, you know, all of the town streets. And to be honest, you know, ours are generally in pretty good shape. I can't really tell you that right off the top that we've got. Now, we've gone in and tried to save some money. We've gone in and done milling, for instance, where sidewalks get uneven. We we've spent money milling to try and save having to go in and repour. Doesn't look quite as nice when we do that. But it's been a cost savings associated with that. But I do, I hear you.
But when you you're talking about street work versus sidewalk work, right? So.
No, I'm talking about actual sidewalks. We have milled sidewalks.
No, I know that. Yeah, I understand that. But you said there are some streets we can't work on because they're not our streets.
Correct.
Right.
But we can't work on the sidewalks either because the sidewalks would have to be within the right of way. And so the the sidewalks themselves would actually be within the walkable right of way that's owned by the county. So that would be a county project. And I give you the example up at Hawthorne Road. And I'm sure, David, you remember when we did the sidewalk along Hawthorne? We literally wanted the county to paint the crosswalk across Washington Avenue. But because we didn't have enough right of way that we owned on the east side of Washington Avenue, we couldn't put sidewalks down any of the side streets to get back to Kent Avenue. So we couldn't even paint a crosswalk across the street that would improve. Now, I will tell you that when we put that sidewalk in up there along Hawthorne, people used to walk right up the side of the road all the time. And when we added that sidewalk, it wasn't the best. Don't get me wrong, because we didn't put curb and gutter and everything in there because we had limited funds. But that sidewalk is one of the more actively used sidewalks where people walk back and forth to CBS, Walgreens, Target, all of those. They walk that sidewalk. And that's a that was a very positive add that I think the town, you know, added in that situation.
And I just just want to make sure I'm clear. So work being done on sidewalks on Route Six would.
Have to be done by the state.
Okay, so it's not that we're not doing it because we expect the state to do it with the transformation that we hope to see at some point in three or four years down the road. It's because we can't.
We we cannot, we cannot work within that. We can work with the state's right of way when we have, for instance, a water main break. They'll make us go out there and repair the sidewalk if we do that. But any sidewalk changes or anything would all have to be done, approved by state highway and paid for by state highway and done with state highway approved contractors. We're generally not, other than for water and sewer repairs, we're not allowed to work within the right of ways that are owned by the state. Correct.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
And my only comment is, great job on the tree with your great staff. And thank you for the Veterans Day Parade as well to have those big trucks out there as deterrents really, really was a showing safety. So great job.
I will say that I I appreciate it. You know, the council allowed us to buy that trailer for the tree. And the nice thing about that is is that every year we bring the trailer out. And it has everything there. The tree has not been taken out of it or any been moved around. It stays down there, it stays dry. And it's been tremendously positive to store that in there. Because then it doesn't sit in a building where other things get piled on it in that nature. It has, you know, that that tree's probably, what is it? Eight years old now and it still looks very, very good. It really has not deteriorated.
So it's 2019. The tree came in in 2019.
Is that right?
Yes, it did.
Five years.
It did. Because the first two years, seventeen and eighteen, we had the small tree in the in the atrium.
But still, even five years old. I mean, I think it's it's, you know, every year when we pull it out, we take it, take very good care of it.
It looks amazing.
And it really does look good.
And the lighting of the Christmas tree is December 3rd. Thank you very much. All right, Treasurer Larson, come on down.
Good evening. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two questions for you and they are really easy questions tonight. So I want to know if you're seeing any revenue from the speed cameras yet?
No, I'm not.
Okay. And then for the FY22 budget, and I think that's I'm correct on the FY22 budget, we increased the fees for processing requests through the police department. And we thought that that would generate additional revenue. And I'm wondering if you're seeing any revenue from the the fees that we increase for the traffic reports that they request, attorney requests? Are we seeing an increase in that?
No, but I believe it's still at $10. I have not seen that increase.
I remember Lieutenant Payne and it well, Captain Payne now and Captain Bagley. But when they came before us, they thought that the amount of requests that we got was absorbent. And it took a lot of manpower and they wanted to increase the fees. And I thought we voted to approve those fees.
I'll look into that, but it's been $10 for a very long time. But I will, I will definitely look into that.
Okay, okay. That's it.
I just have a follow up to that. The questions by Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I was not under the understanding that the increase, that I do believe we we voted on. And that was based on the staff time to recover data from body cam footage and everything else that's kind of newer, rather than just a written chief described as like a civil collision report. I did not see, I don't recall that being a kind of a a revenue generator or an income generator more as giving us the time worked by our staff. Is that, I don't know if you even recall.
I do not recall what you're talking about. But I mean, it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask that the staff technically be reimbursed for the time for an individual activity.
Yeah, I know when I requested private life as as an attorney from other departments, it's usually, you know, it's $100. It's a completely different request in and of itself. So it's, I don't think the departments are making money by doing it, but they're definitely being honest with the time they have to spend with.
We can definitely look into that. I will confirm what it is and we can address that during the budget for FY25.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. On your pie chart, it says revenue through September 2023. And what do you mean, or you've probably done this before, but what is miscellaneous revenue?
That's like interest and other miscellaneous things. One of the real reasons why it's so much more than last year is because the interest. I mean, interest was over 200,000 already this quarter.
So it's that much? Okay, thank you. And then I noticed on one of the enterprise funds, the total sewer expenses is a negative 4.7. Are there any concerns about those expenditures? I know we're not, well, not quite halfway through the current fiscal year, but I just curious about any any observations or any concerns about the numbers so far?
On the sewer expense.
Let me find the page. Let me see.
Is it on the sewer fund expense?
Yes.
Listing?
It's on the spreadsheet.
So part of that is there were more capital ally expenses that have occurred during that period of time than in FY24. The other item on there, which it was under other expenses, that is the debt. One of the debt services were paid off last year. And that number also doesn't reflect the heritage green debt amount.
Okay. And then finally, there's a spreadsheet on the ARPA project expense report as of September 30th. Any concerns that we'll be able to meet the federal requirement terms of encumbrance versus obligation?
We are currently in discussions on how to evaluate the current projects and where they're at. And if we need to reallocate those funds to other projects or add a different project to make sure we use those funds. But I'm not concerned about using those funds because of the type of restrictions we have are very broad.
So so we have a good comfort level that we'll be able to use the funds as as.
Yeah, we're we're currently.
For these categories or for these projects? So is it a concern about being held up by contracts or contractors or?
That's not, that's not a concern at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have a quick question. Well, first of all, clarification. Chief, is the are the speed cameras up and operational? Thank you. And the other thing is, is there a way in the future, that I don't want to take away from anything that you all do now, to see how many of our residents have signed up for WaterSmart?
I can get you that information.
And that way we can really make a push for it. I had a phone call today. It was a complaint, but it was fine from someone from Pine Grove. And I really encouraged them to, it it wasn't about water. It was about trash and they didn't know that the trash wasn't going to be picked up on Friday. And so it was a whole thing. But that gave me the opportunity to not only plug our WaterSmart, but also what I will be doing so that they have this information, which makes sense, is I'm going to bring some of our town notes over to one of the, I guess, showrooms there so that they have that because they're saying, and of course, I encourage them to sign up for our everything there and spread the word. But the WaterSmart is the one that I think, once we're getting them, especially new, that we can really encourage them. And I don't know if you you all do that.
We actually, at the last couple billing cycles, we have the information for WaterSmart, sign up for WaterSmart and the link to it on the bills.
When they are signing up, when they come through as a new resident, is that, are they being told about WaterSmart?
I could not say that because I'm not communicating that. I the only communication that the finance department is doing is through the bills. When we send them out, we have a verbiage there.
Okay, because that might be a great opportunity there to get them right as they're signing up on the new ones. But thank you, that would be helpful so we can make another push.
I can get you that information.
Thank you for the hard job that you're doing.
You know, I asked for a stack of pliers and someone gave them to me. I don't know if it was Director Stahl or someone here that, and I put them in our mailroom at Steeplechase. And they are all gone.
Yeah, that's a great idea is to put them in certain communities like that. And that's why I said, yeah, to take that over at Pine Grove.
I've been putting the the link.
You can do that at Pine Grove.
I've been putting the link to that from our new website on different community associations and Facebook pages. And that seems to help too. I've gotten some feedback from residents and clerks around that. A, they got off it and now they're back on it and they they like it. But my point, like, as you said earlier, it's good to get the word out. So I'm trying to do the same thing.
They are seeing what this individual had shared with me today is that everyone on their street is from out of state that have moved in. And most of them are, uh, federal employees. So they don't know all the ins and outs. So maybe that is a great way of. Not me. Not me. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Oh, there she is. Director Fitz. Any questions for Director Fitz?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just one question. You recovered well from that.
From this whole thing?
You do. You recovered well.
It's, it's not a great view, but.
You, you look good.
Thank you.
You said it's not a great view. Come on.
Well, it's a whole like.
So, quick, quick question. Um, will you elaborate on the Open Public Information Act request?
Which one was that, ma'am?
There's only one open and it was about, um, stagecoach, I believe.
Oh, okay. So this one was actually received through from USDA. Uh, it wasn't directly, it wasn't directed to us, but it was, um, uh, FOIA request through USDA that they received in July. Um, it appears to have something like five, over 5,000 responsive records. And we've received batch one of, uh, of that to review. They would like a response by this week, by Friday.
Oh, okay. 5,000.
The total, yes.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes, so, um, I think I had asked about this before, but I didn't follow up with it. Can, um, I, like, is there a way we could just, if we wanted to, and I want to get a copy of the FOIA request that we receive, I know this isn't in that category, but I would just like to see them as they come through. I know.
I, I remember you asking the question, Councilman. I thought it was in theory. Yes, absolutely, you can. But if you would act, like to see the, most of them come in through email, not through the form that we've provided on the webpage. Um, but I'm happy to forward that. It is a Public Information Act. So.
Thanks.
Um, how far back would you like those?
Let's just go from.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't want you to do more work.
Okay.
It's just, um, I'm just curious. Thanks.
So I have a couple of comments. First of all, um, an awesome farmer's market again this year. And I know Shinoa and Ashley did a fantastic job and you, you were a great, strong leader for them. And, and so thank you for that. Uh, excited about the Bird City Pocket Park. Now it has the pathway in that. So that is incredible. And can you please just give a brief, uh, next step for, um, the license plates? I saw that they were approved and now it, we need at least 25, is it?
We do need at least 25 completed applications with fees. Um, so we can send that batch over to MVA and they can issue the first 25 or however many we have.
And how does one do that?
Um, the, there's a packet on the webpage that people can download and fill it out at home. Um, that does ask for some pretty detailed information, your title number, your policy number. Um, so you need to have that with you when you're filling it out. Um, you can also bring that information in to Town Hall if you want to get it down. And if you just want a hard copy, right by the, the windows in the front office, there are instructions and the actual form to fill out. And they can pick those up, fill them out and drop them off here at Town Hall.
Thank you. They look great.
Okay.
Do you have a flyer or something about the tag? So maybe we can share it with our residents.
Uh, we don't have a separate flyer, Councilwoman, but we do have the, I mean, the instructions and the, um.
Just want to bring awareness, you know.
Printed one. And actually, there will be an advertisement. Somehow magically Shannon got free advertising space in a newspaper. So it'll come out in, in, uh, the Southern Maryland News. Um, but I can look into having a flyer made on that, certainly.
Just, it's a good job sharing it on the town's Facebook page as well with a link directly to the application, which I gotta say, it's pretty nice. Like the website where the application is, it's pretty easy to manage. So digitally, it's, it's easy to find, but I know that a lot of people would like a handout.
And it is on the webpage as well.
It is.
It's the town webpage. Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much. All right. And Director Kennedy. Any questions for HR?
Good night, Mayor. Thank you. I saw all hands go up.
So congratulations on the return on investment for Palos, Palos Lacy. That was pretty impressive that you would even be able to track, you know, that.
And that number keeps growing, ma'am.
Excellent. And it's only been in place for about three.
Uh, late August, early September.
Excellent. And then, um, we have net eight new employees. You had 11, lost three, so total eight. And where are they? Is it?
The new employees?
Yeah, are they public works?
So we have had, let me see if my memory works, um, to, we've had three or four police. We've had two public works. We've got two new hires in financed, uh, and then one is a town clerk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's nine. Send somebody, the grant writer.
Yeah, that's finance. That was one of the two finances.
Okay. All right. Good job. And the, the turnover rate looks great, you know.
Hoping to keep it that way.
A great job. So thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Again, great report. Um, I will also echo the return on investment. And also the fact that you referenced the, our, our strategic plan when you started this initiative. So thank you again. I just had a, I guess from my own education, under employee relations, FMLA, you, you have one on intermittent and one on bonding. What is bonding?
Bonding for a child, the birth or adoption of a child.
Got it. And intermittent means they're kind of in and out.
That means, yeah, they're taking it in bits and pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any update on your senior planner? I know that according to this.
Oh, man. It's a struggle.
It's a struggle.
Even, even when I am getting in applications, there, it, a lot of them look like the ones that are just clicking to get that unemployment checkbox that says, ah, I've applied for three jobs.
You were in the process of interviewing one.
Yeah, we did some pre-screening and the, what they thought the job was and what it is didn't align. So.
And good job on the door, um, competition. I don't like the word competition. How about decorations? Um, I understand that some people were a little stressed out about it, but it, it looks fantastic. And I love how, how it is really, um, just building that community of, you know, that team building.
Everybody seemed to have fun doing it. And, uh, before I came down here, I think we had 46 votes so far. So people are participating.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you very much. That's a neat little addition to the, the team.
And, and just to tease, I think the next town thing I want to do is, um, the fourth Thursday in February is, uh, National Chili Day. So maybe there will be something for that.
Okay, I like that tease. Game on. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And that concludes, uh, that section. We're on to new business commission reports. Um, Councilman Winkler.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, there you go. Your first official thing. Councilman Chollinger.
Yes, uh, Beautification Commission met yesterday morning. Um, fortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but they did provide some extensive notes. They are a busy group, um, full of industrious, uh, creativity. Uh, Mayor, you stole the number one thing that I was going to address tonight, which was the little plate of license plates. Um, but the only thing I would add, it's only $35 per vehicle to get that process moving. Um, so that's pretty reasonable to show your local pride. Um, you can also come in person to get a, a, a paper application as well. Uh, a couple of other highlights. The Arts Work Group portion of our Beautification Commission is seeking artists and developing public art downtown. Um, so if there are any artists locally that are interested in cooperating in this venture to get hold of us through the Beautification Commission, specifically, uh, Ms. Wang. Um, and then we have a vacancy that's still available for our Beautification Commission. So if you all know of anybody that has a passion for the aesthetics and the arts, um, for our area and for downtown, or even just preserving kind of the natural beauty that we have or for, you know, Bird City, Bee City, trees, they like any of those things, uh, they're welcome to join us on our commission and put in an application and interview with us. Our next meeting is January 29th, uh, 2024 at nine o'clock AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bryant Ward? Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, no, no commission report, but I, I would add to, uh, Councilman Chollinger's report, I, I just had a comment today on my Facebook page about art and what we're doing. So I may, uh, give you a call or email and I may have this person reach out to you as well.
So I, I kinda, I didn't report everything. There are gonna be a lot of awesome surprises coming up that I'm gonna save for future reports, but I might give you a little behind the scenes.
No, but I mean, I have somebody who's interested in this.
Bring them on.
And, and, and.
Lots of teasing tonight.
And if you mind, uh, perhaps we can talk because I, and maybe you're gonna do that. I have some other suggestions as well for.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. And my report is, um, we had a successful shop small Saturday. There were a lot of people out there. The horse and carriage rides were amazing. The port tobacco players, uh, I ended up catching them up here. There were several, um, forms of entertainment right here on our own steps. So congratulations to the Business Association for a job well done. This Sunday, it is the old time holiday gathering where we will be lighting the Christmas tree at about 5:15. I have good word that Santa is coming, uh, via, uh, some type of big red truck. So that should be, um, a lot of fun. And there's activities that start at 3 PM. So bring the kids. It's for old and young. And then on December ninth, we will have our annual breakfast with Santa. There is a signup sheet. Um, and I heard it was full, but you can get on the waitlist because there are always cancellations. So, um, and that is what I have, um, for my report this week. So with that, we have, before I, uh, adjourn, we have a reason to go into, two reasons to go into closed session. And I will, uh, entertain a motion for the first one to go into closed session immediately following this meeting.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to go into closed session, uh, pursuant to, uh, Article three dash three zero five B fourteen to discuss, uh, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened, a matter directly related to negotiating strategy or content of potential bid or proposal. And, uh, and if public discussions closer would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process.
Topic?
Hospital agreement.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Um, I will do a roll call. If you are in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. Councilman Winkler. Councilman Chollinger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
And Mayor James is an aye. We have a reason to go into closed session. One other reason too. Um, do, do I have a motion for this one?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to statutory authority to closed session subsection three dash three zero five B seven to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Topic, stagecoach crossing.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, I will take a roll call again. If you are in favor of going into closed session for this one, please indicate by saying aye. Councilman Winkler. Councilman Chollinger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Mayor James is an aye as well. Thank you very much for attending our meeting. I move to adjourn. All right, let's, uh.